Good evening and welcome to the court.
My question.
There we go.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Good evening and welcome to the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District Board Meeting. It's September 19th. If you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. We have no public here with us in the room and I don't... Is there any public on the phone that would like to speak to an issue not on the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to board goals. If you recall, you had these in your packet last month and we looked at them, reviewed them, and said that we would come back to them at this meeting, discuss, wordsmith, and adopt. So changes, suggestions, deletions, rewrites, new goals. So these are board goals. These are goals for this board.
I have one.
Okay.
The only thing I would do, and it's not a big deal, is to change the SEL to sort of write it out because somebody else may look, looking at it, may not know what the SEL means.
Sure. So just write it out.
Yeah, just, I know it's kind of long, but if somebody's looking at it from the outside, it might just help them understand where we're going.
Sure. Other suggestions?
Does that maybe then want to say meet the unique social, emotional, learning, and academic needs of sixth and seventh and eighth grade students? Or is that too narrow?
Where are we? Two or one?
Two.
Sorry, it says, oh, two, yeah. I was kind of tagging on what, yeah, what Mike was saying. It says unique SEL and education needs, and I was wondering if that wanted to be maybe academic instead of education?
Um...
Or is that?
I don't know. Maybe education kind of leaves it a little more open? So it's... I don't know.
Because the first one is definitely broad and would apply across the board, I would imagine, including sixth, seventh, and eighth, right?
Number one, yes.
Yeah, number one is really broad, so that sort of encompasses probably both. It seems like, and I think I wasn't here, I apologize, probably when these were created, but it feels like that second one is really trying to target something sort of specific about middle school, and so maybe being a little more specific with the language there wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing?
Okay, so to put academic in front of education?
Traditionally, the social, emotional, academic, it's usually used, they're three together, so.
Okay. So it would say social, emotional, learning, and academic education.
I would just say social, emotional, and academic needs.
Yeah.
Social, emotional, and academic. Social, emotional, and academic. Okay, I just want to make sure I have it written down so that... When we type them up. So it would remodel the Quarry Valley Middle School concept to better meet the unique social, emotional, and academic needs of sixth, seventh, eighth grade students. Okay.
Sweet.
All right. Other comments? For the other goal, for the vision? Speak now or forever hold your peace?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. So a motion would be in order then to approve the two goals in the vision for Quarry Valley. The first goal would be to enhance academic and extracurricular offerings across Quarry Valley to allow innovative opportunities for all students. The second goal would be to remodel the Quarry Valley Middle School concept to better meet the unique social, emotional, and academic, academic needs of sixth, seventh, eighth grade students. And the vision would be to create a diverse, equitable, and inclusive education community where everyone is respected and included and experiences a genuine sense of belonging and reach their full potential. That probably sounds a little awkward.
Belonging in order to reach their full potential.
Belonging... In order to reach their full... Okay. See? It sounds good when you write it the first few times and read it 10 times. And then when you come back to it, it sounds like you don't have concept of the English language. All right. So is there a motion to approve the two goals and the vision for Quarry Valley?
I'll make the motion first, Sarah.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business. First order of new business is VISPID voting members' proxy. So there's a meeting October 21st for the School Board Association's annual meeting at Lake Maury. I guess the first question is, is anyone planned to attend that meeting? Any school board member? And if you want to attend, we'll pay for you to, to attend.
Could, um, would you mind saying a quick, a quick word about what VISPID is for, for new folks and what the meeting is? I know an email probably came through, but just in case folks didn't look at it.
Uh, it's, it's the annual meeting that they have. They'll, there's a vote for, it'll be for VHI and VISPID, right?
Yeah. So VISPID basically, just the insurance, you know, it's a board insurance company. So therefore, each year we have to just, you know, there's a VSA, VSBA meeting on the 21st, 22nd, and so the VISPID will meet, have, hold their annual meeting, I believe it's on 21st, and I am, so they're just, you know, general items that need to be approved and not approved, and so.
So you'll like vote on like the board of directors?
Correct.
If they're board of directors. You'll vote on, uh, yeah, election of directors, hear the reports, those kinds of things. It's all pretty, ugh. But, um... So, but if someone wants to go to the meeting, there are other courses and, um, that you can participate in. They, they have other workshops that people can, um, participate in, so. If no one is going, we can just have a proxy vote. Or we could have someone from another district vote for us. So what is the pleasure of the board?
At least doing a couple of the VHI in with this as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, whatever we decide to do for VISPID, I would presume we're doing for VHI too because it's happening at the same time.
I'd be in favor of proxy if somebody's going.
Okay. So no one from this board is going. Chris is going, but he can't vote. So the other option would be Tina's going, right?
Tina and Erica both will be there.
So do you want one of them to vote for us? And we need to designate which one it is.
I would feel, I'd move Tina.
Okay.
If she wants to do it.
So the motion is to have Tina be our, um, delegate?
Kristen Ross has joined. She had said she, she may want to attend, so you just want to quickly ask her to see...
Oh, Kristen. Kristen Ross?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here.
That's good. Um, we're talking about VISPID and VHI. Did you think you were going up to the meeting?
No, I mean, I, when it's Monday nights, I have, I'm probably gonna have to do virtual unless I can get out of class early, which today I didn't, so.
It's not on a Monday. It's a...
It's a Thursday, Friday. It's October 20th to 21st, I do believe. I don't have it right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misheard you. I thought you was asking me if I was coming to the meeting in person right now. Um, uh, no, I'm not, I, I have to teach, so, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right. So Mike has made a motion to have Tina be our, are we seeing our proxy vote?
Uh, she would just be our voting member.
Okay. To have Tina be our voting member for both VHI and VISPID. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Free passes for Quarry Valley employees and board members to all events. So this was something I asked Chris to put on the agenda. This was something we had done, um, last year in Proctor for sporting events, plays, and like that for our teachers. We had the kids make up these little passes they give to the teachers that said that, you know, they were, I don't know, they were kind of cute, and the teachers liked them. Some of them wore them on their badges. And I think probably some other schools. Do you do that, Jay or Joe? Let teachers in for free? Oh, no. Okay.
Oh, go ahead. We let teacher, students, and staff in for free.
And we let teachers into free, in, in for free to basketball games. I believe that's the only thing that we charge for.
Okay. So...
For us, it's just football and basketball games.
Okay. Yeah, and I think like in Proctor, probably the only thing we charge for is basketball, and then, um, when we've had like a play, sometimes there's a charge for that. It just kind of depends. I just thought it might be nice that, um, that all teachers know, and that it could be across Quarry Valley. So if an instructor from West Rutland wants to go watch a game in Poltony because West Rutland's playing there, that they would be allowed interest at no fee. And I thought, you know, I, I don't know like how that, if you guys feel comfortable just having them say, oh, I'm a teacher, or if you want a pass or something made up, so I don't know if you keep, I don't know, a tally of how many people you have. And that's something we could always discuss later. But I also thought it would be nice for Quarry Valley board members to have that ability also. I'd really like to see board members, you know, attending more events and going to more things. And I think that if board members have the ability to do that, that, that should be kind of, I guess, part of the bonus of serving on this board. So I don't know how principals feel about that because that would be, you know, it's a couple dollars you're not gonna get. But I just think, I, I know in some schools that's just kind of general practice, and I think it would just be nice if, if that just became practice for Quarry Valley, for all teachers moving around Quarry Valley, no matter where you're going and watching the game, that they could have free entrance to whatever that event was. So I'm open for discussion, to shoot me down and tell me why it isn't gonna work.
Well, I, I think it would be a wonderful gesture. We know that typically when the three schools, whenever two of them are playing each other, we usually do see a better representation of the staff there, so for what it's worth, I think it'd be a wonderful gesture.
Anybody in opposition of that? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that we offer free passes for Quarry Valley employees and board members to all Quarry Valley events, sporting, extracurricular?
I can make that motion.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Van discussion. I'm going to pass this over to Louis. Is Louis here?
Yep.
Yes. Hello, good evening. So we've talked about vans quite a few times over the last few months. For those of you who are on the SU board, you may have heard it more. So we ordered three vans at the SU for special education, and we used grant funding for the, to purchase those. Due to the timing of when they came in, one of the, the plan was to have one of those retrofitted to be accessible. Due to the timing that it took for the, get the vans in, and then the additional timing it would have taken to get those, that van retrofitted, we ended up purchasing the retrofitted one from a third party. So we do have a van available at Formula Ford that we ordered that is still available to be purchased. A few months ago, I spoke to the Quarry Valley Board to see if there was any interest in purchasing that van for Quarry Valley as a regular ed van to be used for extracurricular and co-curricular. It would be shared amongst the five schools. There was a little bit of interest, but we never took action on it. So this van could be used for smaller groups to go to activities at, at any of the schools, it would be shared. The cost of the van is $32,500. Over the course of five years, if we use it once or twice a month, it would, and if we didn't use Betscha to transport, we would break even just by using it a couple times a month.
Louis, can you remind us how many can ride in the van?
Uh, so the van can hold, it's got a third row seat. This van is, it's got bucket seats in, in the back, in the second row, so I think it, three, two, three, four, five, it could seat sevens either, including the driver.
Which keeps it under the necessity to have a bus license.
So seven is with the driver, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, seven keeps us under the number.
Discussion, questions, thoughts?
Yeah, this is Tom. So you'd, you'd be hauling six people to an event? Do we have events that small? I'm just wondering.
We do have some small clubs or activities. I'll let the principals answer that one though, because they probably handle it more often than I do.
I just reached out to Louis this afternoon. Our music's going, like just driving up to Castleton, and just said, is there a van? There's six kids plus the music teacher, so there, that'd be the seven. So just small things like that.
We use it at West Rutland for, the guidance counselor will sometimes take kids to specific events that they need to go to. We also use it for our track and field, Tom, especially when it gets to only be two or three people going to a playoff game. Louis, and, and just for the board, you can have five students, well, it has seven, or a room for seven, to keep it marked as a non-school bus with all the lights and the markings. You can have five students in there max with, with an adult, or you can put a second adult. You cannot have more than five students in that. Once you hit that sixth student, it has to be marked as a school bus, if my memory serves me correct.
So that would give us four vans? Louis?
So three of the vans would be owned by the SU, and there's special, special ed. There's one at West Rutland, one at Proctor High School, and one in Rutland Town. This van would be a second van that's owned by Quarry Valley. The current van is, is located at West Rutland.
But it's a general ed van, so you could use it for, you could use it for special ed if, if that wasn't available. I.e., like, I mean, we have kids that, I don't know, like for, that go bowling, or swimming, or things like that, if we didn't have another vehicle.
Would that be reimbursed though, by special ed? I mean, would we get sort of a credit in a sense for using it that way?
If we use the general ed, would that be a bill back? Would that be a bill back?
We use the general ed van for special ed because there was a need that day. There would not be any reimbursement now.
Okay.
We're, we're no longer in a reimbursable model for special ed. It's a block remain.
Yeah.
So there's no additional funding if we have additional expenses.
You want to talk about how we pay for the van?
How, so this, this, if the board approved this van, we can pay for it in one of two ways. One, we could use local dollars out of our current budget, but the one, the way I would recommend is using our reserve fund. We put 200,000, 250,000 into an extracurricular slash co-curricular reserve fund out of last year's, not this lucky year that just ended, but the year before surplus. And since this van would be mostly for extracurricular and co-curricular, I think it would be perfect for, perfect use for those funds.
And we still have the two pickups?
And we still have two pickups, and West Rutland has something else too, right?
West Rutland has a, a general use van...
Yeah.
That is a non-special ed van, and now it has a special ed van. So we have, we have one of each.
The pickups are, are also GRCSU pickups. One is located in Poltony, and one is located in Proctor.
Because they're, us are funded.
Jay, do you use a general use van to transport students to Poltony for football and extracurricular?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I do see this as a way that we could potentially transport students to take classes directly at the other sites as well. I have a bus coming to my building for Stafford kids that then goes over to West Rutland to pick up all those kids. There is some logistical things that would be helped by just having an extra van for anyone, any student.
So hearing from the principals, it sounds like there's a need, that if, if such a van existed, it would be put to good use. There's a need for, yeah. Okay.
So a motion would be in order to approve the purchase of the van for $32,500 from the reserve fund.
This is Kristen, I'll make that motion.
Discussion.
We're getting to, uh, we're having like a small motor pool, aren't we? This van is that much, I mean, seems like we're adding vehicles nonstop, and as far as Stafford, we send buses, but now it, I, I don't know, just seems like a, seems like we're adding a lot of vehicles, to me personally.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you.
All right. Sixth grade middle school discussion. So as you probably guessed from the goals, that this is, this is something that was discussed during the retreat, and this is something that I think Chris has had a discussion with Building Admin about like, um, just...
Yeah, so we, based upon the discussion at the retreat, we're looking at this potential of shifting from a junior high model to more of a middle school model. I think the, the question that was asked is what that van would look like, whether it be a sixth, seventh, or eighth grade band, and if so, you know, what would that look like logistically, the way our, in our current setup that we have, you know, West Rutland has a pre-K through 12 building, but Poltony High School and Proctor High School currently are seventh through 12. So it's just kind of a point of discussion in terms of if there was going to be a shift, what that'd look like, and, you know, what the next steps would be for that. But we do understand that the middle school is a separate beast, for lack of a better expression. I have a particular fondness for middle school. I've worked many, many years with middle school. It's a great age group, but I do recognize that there are very unique needs that, during this time period, and we have to really make sure that we have the programs, the staff to support them, and they could, you know, while we look at a K1, 2, 3 band, the sixth, seventh, or eighth grade band is also critical for academic and post-secondary success. So I think we're looking at what we can do to best put these kids as they, you know, particularly into high schools, whether it be here or somewhere else, on a better footing for success moving forward.
So a couple of questions, or a couple of the topics that we know that we have to look at is, one, the certification for our middle school teachers, if they have the certification to be able to teach sixth grade. So that was one thing we were looking at. And then looking at numbers, um, I guess more on the Poltony-Proctor side, because West Rutland, you're still in one building, and what that would look like in terms of space, moving people up and moving them around. I think the, kind of the concept was during the retreat, and those who were there certainly correct me if I'm misstating this, is that we were looking to make the sixth grade year a much more viable year, and that sixth graders, I don't know, there are comments that, they kind of are on the big kids on campus, but there are things that they could be doing to transition if they were sixth, seventh, eighth, to give them more opportunities extracurricular wise if they were at the junior high level as opposed to staying at the primary level. And it would also, in some of our buildings, open up some space for other needs that we have within our primary buildings, whether it's for special education students, or even looking at the expansion of pre-K. We know how those classes fill up quite quickly, and we certainly want to capture those students as early as we can as well. So this is the time for discussion from board and Building Admin about, you know, possibilities, viability, uh, you know, pros, cons. Let's lay it all out on the table.
I can start.
Okay.
Um, I would say a couple things that I think are sort of obvious, but if we're gonna do this to make sure we have the timing right, like we put effort into making sure that, um, you know, we're not pushing this to do this next year immediately. I think it will take longer than that. You know, we, we really need to do our research and make sure we have all the ducks in a row in, in order to transition to that. So as long as we can make sure that we're doing all of those things, um, you know, there's a lot of aspects I'm sure that Building Admins will be more specific about probably than I can articulate, but I would assume that there's gonna be a lot of aspects of this that, um, at the board level we haven't thought of. So I'm hoping to hear from Building Admins about the kinds of things that need to be looked at to, in order to do this, to make it, you know, really work for all of our kids.
Kristen, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Building Admins, if that's okay. So, uh, you are correct. I think one of the things that, you know, the board would have to make a decision in terms of, you know, one, if this is the direction they would like to go, two, looking at timing. I do agree with you in terms of ROI is very important, and I think we're, in our initial discussions and just the information that was provided to us, there are a lot of logistical concerns, just with a 2020, fall 2023 move. We look at staffing, you know, how many of our staff currently could teach, you know, a sixth grade band. We look at, you know, specials, you know, moving forward. There are just a lot of moving parts. I think, you know, by, if we were to commit to a fall 2024, it does give us the opportunity to really spend some time really just understanding, and as we start to build out staffing, we could really, you know, staff and provide programming, look at space and, you know, other concerns, you know, that as well. So, um, you know, like I said, there, there's always, you know, the devil is in the details. I think as we look at from a logistics, you know, as, you know, sat and talked with Jen, Jay, and Joe, and Joe Harrington... and Joe Harrington about this, I think, well, there was no opposition, but it was more in terms of, we just want to make sure that we, that we, you know, have all, dot our i's across our t's and have just, you know, been very pragmatic about our approach. So, because like I said, the last thing we want to do, except there's a critical age band, we want to make sure that, you know, if this is a path we want to move forward, that we have a middle school that is designed, excuse me, and set up for our student success and staff success as well. So I don't know, if Joe or Jay or Jen have anything they would like to add, or Kristen or Liz, you know, because it will impact, potentially impact buildings as well.
I would say several things come into play. Chris, you and Lisa are correct, certification for the staff would certainly be a priority. I might be the outlier since I'm the K-12. Logistically, the middle school and our fifth and sixth grade are actually all on the same floor. But the certification of those teachers and a thoughtful way that this would be rolled out and spending some time, I think until we actually get really deep into this, we might not know what we don't know. Certainly space wise, I don't think it would help, in my particular case, I'm not sure if that would help with, with space. But the biggest thing would be the plan, the methodology that we would look to say, okay, this is what we want to do and get behind it. It would be easier for myself than it would be for Proctor or Poltonee, simply because we're all together. But certification and setting up that structure of middle school, however it be, would definitely take some planning. I've seen it five through eight, I've seen it six through nine, I've seen lots of different structures come my way over my 30-plus years.
I'll just add a couple of things. It's not just the certifications, it's like a shift in mindset for teachers too. So they will, even if they can get a different certification, they really, if we're thinking middle school mindset, that's a whole nother layer of training for some of them that they will need to go through. Just because you teach someone in seventh and eighth grade doesn't mean that you're taking a middle school approach. And so whatever direction we decide in that would be a consideration for us as well. In my building, you know, I would just have to, we want to look at a bunch of different schedules since a lot of our teachers are shared teachers. We want to make sure that whatever we decide the middle school is not impacting the high school and taking away options there as well. So that the scheduling piece is like the big piece in my mind. I'm running out of rooms in the building to place people. That doesn't mean that I, you know, I've worked in buildings where teachers shifted out of their traditional classroom and that's something that we can certainly explore. But I'm kind of running out of classrooms to have as like a single person classroom. Not a major deal, just something to consider. You know, I think that it would be a good thing for us to also make sure parents are very aware of this. I previously worked in a district where they tried to make this shift and a lot of the parents needed to have just as much explanation about what this looked like as did the teachers. So just something else to think about.
So Jen, along those lines, I think this would be something which, excuse me, the, can be discussed during strategic planning as well, I think, as we, you know, kind of vision out. So I think that, you know, obviously there would be community inputs, you know, student inputs, you know, around this as well, just a, but I do think this is, as we discussed in the summer, you know, part of a five-year plan kind of down the road as well, so.
And I'll just, not much to add from what Jen and Jay said. I mean, the same issue with Jen is that we share some teachers, middle school, high school, and, you know, looking at, for us right now, we would have to kind of rotate classrooms. I don't have empty classrooms right, I mean, we have like a middle school section right now, which is, but if we had added the sixth grade to it, we'd have to start rotating people, which is fine, like you said, that's a scheduling thing we can look at. But that's the other piece we were, you know, we've talked about too is, you know, the scheduling piece. And I mean, the other piece we talked about is the extracurriculars that, you know, right now are, it's, we just affect soccer and basketball with the five, six, you know, usually do that because our football and baseball, softball are all outside of school. The community leagues deal with that type of thing. But, you know, just those are, you know, co-curricular and that type of stuff too, looking into. Are we going to keep those sixth graders and still have them, you know, be part of the five, six group? Or are we going to pull them up and do a true middle school seven, eight, six, seven, eight type thing, so.
I actually want to clarify, I mean, I think we're, you know, the middle school concept approach, I think that's, that's, I look at in terms of, that has to happen regardless. I'm not talking about a physical shift. I think, you know, sometimes we'll get stuck on whether that sixth graders belong in that band or if it's five, six, seven, eight. I think we really, you know, and Jay, Joe, and Jen, I think would agree with this. We have to move out of this junior high mentality. I know when I was a principal, I think we had individuals who were trying to teach seventh graders the same way they're trying to teach juniors in high school. I think as Jen had said, there is a very specific approach, philosophy to working with middle school kids. So I think there are two discussions here. One is what that middle school looks like, whether it be sixth, seventh, eighth, where those sixth graders will be housed. Or if we're in our current setup, I think there still has to be a shift that we work towards here. And so I, you know, I think that's just important for me to reiterate is that, you know, there are two components to this. But I think one is, based upon our discussion, I think it's, you know, our building admins would agree that we have to really look at how do we really shift our approach to that middle school band, whether that may be, so.
And I know something I talked with Chris about too is if we do it, I don't want to see teachers a year or two in, oh, we can, this teacher can teach this high school class, so we'll move them to that high school class. If we're, you know, if we're going to do it, let's do it, let's keep those teachers in the middle school, you know, in that situation too.
I think something to consider as well is the developmental state of our kids where they're at right now. Some of them are somewhat immature than they have been in the past. So if this shift is made, we need to be able to support their social, emotional wellbeing as well.
So the shift, Kristen, being if the sixth graders were to move to our high schools, correct?
Physically.
The physical?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a question I had as well and probably just, I mean, I don't have a lot of background in, in this age group, right? But if we're, you know, in a situation, it sounds like at Wes Rutland, there's a floor, so there's a little bit of physical separation between, say, your sixth graders and your 12th graders. So what would it look like? And does that matter? I mean, so there's a lot, I think there's a lot of, you know, we said parents, Jenny said, parents would need to be brought along. Like, I think maybe there's a little bit more learning too for, for, at least I will say for me and this group to, you know, to answer those types of questions might be, might be helpful. And when you say there's a different mentality, you know, it'd help me to know a little bit about, are we talking about, you know, curriculum? Are we talking about treating sixth graders as emerging, you know, not as sort of, right, as emerging kind of, well, emerging adult is not quite the right term, but right, it's a different developmental stage, right, that we're talking separate. So what does that look like? What kind of supports do they need that treating them as a group, whether physically or, or not? Like what is, right, what does that look like? So, and maybe that's not for this meeting, but those are some, some of the questions that I have, which is probably too much for right now, but, yeah.
So it sounds like the first thing we perhaps need to do as we continue this discussion is work on that middle school shift mindset, that that's something that is, that we need to be working on across all three schools, no matter how we move with this possible shifting of sixth grade or middle school. That that would be a place perhaps where we need to be focusing professional development and that should be a core focus for our middle school teachers for, for this year.
Well, I think, not just this year, but moving forward, I think that's, you know, right, I think that would be one from a direction from the board. That's why I brought the strategic plan, because that would be a, we're, you know, we're shifting that, whether it be a six, seven, eight, or just a seven, eight, whatever it be, or as Jay said, seven, eight, nine. It really just depends on what a discussion brings us to. But I think there still is that mindset. And I know Sarah had asked, there would be a lot more information about what that middle school model looks like. You know, what that means for our parents, you know, what would be different, what would, it might be various subtle differences, but I think there is a lot of messaging, but for us to message that, we also have to work on that, you know, behind the scenes first, so. And then I think through that discussion, I think a natural part of that would be a discussion for maybe the fall of 2024 in terms of if, whether or not we believe the sixth grade, you know, really belong in the, or, you know, are a part of this. And so we can have this discussion over the course of this year as they're setting this up as well. The, the physical makeup or the structure of that middle school.
So have the discussion this year and have the discussion continuing in the fall of 2024 or?
No, I would say too, you know, that Jay, Jen, Joe, myself, will start working on the middle school and with, you know, Lisa Madison and, you know, other, you know, district admins, you know, around this. So we'll begin working on that, that middle school, you know, which I think we're all in agreement with. I think the discussion that needs to be had, you know, at the board level, the opinion level is really what that band will look like. Whether, you know, whether it be a sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, seventh or eighth grade. And if it is that sixth or eighth grade, then are we committing to say fall of 2024 for that to occur?
Okay.
Yeah, and I would add to that, Chris, which is again maybe obvious, but like their resource needs that you might envision to make that work. What are, you know, supports, whether that's, you know, physical space and/or staffing? You know, I know it's a challenge to have some electives right now, at least in Poltonee, so with the staffing we have. So what additional sort of resources can the board, or should we be discussing, thinking about, et cetera?
Would it be completely out of place if we sort of had a schedule? I.e. when we think things may be done so that we don't fall behind if we're looking to 24? So that we can say that hypothetically, I'm just saying that, say, you know, by February of next year, you will know one, two, and three. So when you come back to us, we can say, okay, looks like we're on track for that. So that, because we don't want to get to a point where, oh, well, we can't do it because we didn't talk to the teachers about what they need, you know? I guess what I'm saying is the puzzle isn't complete till all the pieces are on the table. And I don't want to, I know there's a lot to it and I'm anxious.
Right, I'm sorry, Mike.
Yeah, I'm just anxious that we don't keep putting it off because we don't have a room or we don't have a teacher or we don't have something, you know?
So, right, and I think our goal would be between now and let's, it's just, I don't know, say March, would be an opportunity for us to engage communities and discussions and, you know, and we have, as I said, we have a strategic plan. Where, you know, one particular venue where we could have community, we could have our community discussions, we could have, you know, other opportunities for this. And then with, you know, say, you know, March or April, we could say at that time, you know, we could even look at developing a middle school committee and where, you know, the committee could work on this. And that committee would not just be board members, could also be, we have community members, staff, you know, which I've worked in other districts, other boards where you have these committees comprised of all stakeholders. And then come back and make a recommendation to the board, say in April, in terms of here's, you know, yes or no on the sixth grade moving, and then we would then make that, you know, that, you know, motion or approval. And April, that's in fall of 2024, that, you know, sixth graders will be here or, you know, they won't be here. And then we will know how to proceed. And then we have the year to get things set up and ready to go for that fall, so. But I think it's important for, for admins and I think community members to kind of know one way or another in terms of what direction we are heading with this.
Sure, and that's why we're having the discussion tonight.
Right, right, right. But I think like was, as I said, timetable, which I, I agree, I think everyone would need, I think everyone would like a timetable in terms of know, like what the next steps are going to be.
So maybe that's something you and building admins could kind of put together for the, let's say, November meeting? Because next meeting, I'm guessing it'll probably be pretty budget-based. And, I mean, it doesn't, you know, loosely that.
It gives us some, it gives us some check marks along the way to see where we're at, if we're, if we're ahead or behind.
With respect to like numbers, certification, space. And then, you know, having that, you know, when we have in-service or an in-service coming up, maybe that could also be broached with teachers here in the fall that, you know, we're going to, we're not saying we're definitely doing, but we're saying we're looking at that just to, you know, so they feel like they've already been brought into the conversation, so.
I just thought of another question too and about, so like at Poltonee High, we get students from like Middletown Springs and places like that. So how, you know, another question to look at is if you're ascending school to Poltonee or another, you know, where do those students fit in if they've already done their middle school somewhere else? So just another thought there too.
Well, I think that's a question that we've discussed kind of behind, you know, with the admins about what that may look like. I know that when you go through the seventh row, you have students who will come in at any time, you know, during that, they might come in as eighth graders or ninth graders. But I think it, you know, in talking with, you know, Rutland Towns principal today about this, and we're discussing this, this concept of this shift and what that might mean, you know, because I know that they're a pre-K through eight building and so they have a middle school built in. And so, you know, what we can learn from them, what they can learn from us, how we can work together with that. And then talking with Middletown Springs and Wells Village, they are, you know, pre-K through six. So what impact that would have on them? But I think it's more in terms of, I think we look at Corey Valley, how do we move forward? And then how do we support students who would move in and matriculate in as seventh graders or as eighth graders or ninth graders? Just as we would with any other student. So, but you're right, those are, those are some, once again, other points of discussion that we need to consider as well, so, thanks.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I think it sounds like we have a good concept of a path forward. And if building admin and Chris are, you know, put a loose schedule together for us, we'll look at that in November and kind of keep this, starting in November, kind of keep this on our agenda just to continually have a conversation so it doesn't fall off. So the public knows that it's, it's a continuing conversation. All right? Thank you very much. All right, moving on, approval of minutes. A motion would be in order to approve the August 9th minutes.
I can make that motion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of warrants, you receive your warrants via your GRC issue email. Questions should be directed to Louis. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'll, I'll just talk about it here before. So before we move into the superintendent's report, you'll see on the agenda this evening that principals report save for informational purposes only. Going forward, principal reports will be in your packets, but we won't have principals speaking to their reports. If there are highlights to be discussed or to be talked about, Chris will be bringing those through his superintendent's report. The two things that we do want to continue to see in principal reports, and I think we see in the majority of them, are fundraising activities and the list of total enrollment this year versus last year. And I think those have been pretty standard practice requests from, from the board. Any questions about that?
Will principals still be able to respond if there's a board question about it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, we'll move into superintendent's report.
Good, thank you. So I just have a few things just to talk about. I know that whereas we're entering the, our fourth week of school, just, you know, I've said this in all of our board meetings, I just want to publicly state this as well. I just want to thank all of our Corey Valley admins, front office staff, you know, custodians, everyone else for all their hard work over the summer. Buildings look great, everything was ready to go. And I also want to thank our staff and our building admins and all. And I also want to thank our staff and our building admins and all those for providing summer programming for our students as well. So it was great to see some of our kids in there and some of the enriching programs that we had available for our students. So I just want to say thank you for, for that. We did have a good start to the school year. I was able to make it around to all of our buildings, you know, the first week of school. And in the past couple of weeks, I've been, you know, kind of in each of the buildings looking again. And I know that sounds weird to say, but it is nice to, to see kids in the building, to see kids smiling, kids engaged. And I know that it's a nice shift when the angry phone calls I'm getting or emails I'm receiving are about it for educational purposes. And so I enjoy having those conversations around education. I engage in families. But, and, you know, we're aware that we're still dealing with, you know, aspects of COVID in our communities. And we're still trying, you know, like I said, still providing safe environments and doing everything we can to, you know, just, you know, help our kids out. But it has been a great start to our school year in each of our buildings. And I said, I thank our teaching staff and our support staff and our admins and all of our staff, I mean, for, for a great start to the year. And the students as well. So hopefully that continues. I know that traditionally, there's a bit of a honeymoon period and then things, as yet the end of September, October, where things got to settle in. But like I said, we have good people in our buildings who will continue to support our kids and make sure that all their needs are met. So, thank you. Maps testing, we have, map system will be during the month of September. So once we have those results, we'll work with our building admins on kind of break those down, see what the next steps are, kind of setting our goals for the year around growth. And then we will look to also have some reports for our, to the boards around that as well. Just so you can kind of see where we're at and where we'd like to go with our students over the course of the year. One of the traditions that GRCSU has added in short time was typically after the back to school or the in-service, we recognize two individuals as our GRCSU Teacher of the Year. These two individuals will go to the UVM Outstanding Teachers Day, traditionally held in the spring. And hopefully this year, that'll be backed in person. I think the past couple of years, it's been virtual, which has always been nice. But I think the in-person ceremony just is real something special for the staff members to get up there. They're surrounded by other individuals who are being recognized that day. It just, the UVM and State does a very nice job. So I do want to recognize, we had a Polley Elementary School teacher, and I can put my glasses on because I don't have the big font, Mike. Polley Elementary School's Amy Kelly was recognized as one of our outstanding teachers. I'm going to read just what was written about Amy, just so the public can hear some of the great things she's been doing and how much we think of her. So Amy Kelly's been a teacher at Polley Elementary School for the past 14 years, serving as both a special educator and a classroom teacher. During this time, she achieved a master's degree in reading, all while supporting her students in learning by being creative, innovative, and dedicated. Having high standards for her students as well as for herself, Amy understands the importance of building character and thus provides a classroom environment that fosters responsibility, respect, and empathy. Her students set an example as they embrace each other's opinions, ideas, and differences, supporting a growth mindset and preparing them to be leaders amongst their peers. Amy has welcomed new initiatives through the implementation of project-based learning, which assists her students in taking ownership and identifying their own strengths, building independence and confidence. She has been instrumental in guiding her team in identifying prior standards and performance indicators to advance a consistent approach and expectations across the supervisory union. Amy demonstrates collegiality when talking about student performance and bases decisions collaboratively, using data as a guidance process. One of Amy's best attributes, in addition to her cooperative and flexible nature, is that she brings a passion for learning, leads by example to ensure that all students reach their fullest potential. Congratulations, Amy, on a well-deserved honor. A couple of other items I have in the, in our packet in my report, just about the copy of just the port to graduates. That information was sent out to the community. You all should have received a, the copy of that graphic as well. And then also just a little bit from the strategic plan. I do want to highlight that our design team meetings have been set for October 3rd from five to seven, November 7th from five to seven, and February 6th from five to seven. They will be in person at West Rutland School. And I would, seriously, we invite all board members, community members, parents, guardians, students, and staff to take part in this design team process. I think it would be great to, as we look at what not just the Corey Valley, but the SU is going to look like over the next five years and where we're headed. So it's an important process and we welcome all people's perspective, please. So, and that's all we really had for this. Any questions?
Questions? And if people can just only attend one of the meetings, they still are welcome to come.
Yeah, if people can't make it to all three, just when they reach out to Kristy McGuinness, just let them know, like, where the conflict may arise. And there will be other opportunities. I know that some people can't attend because of a variety of reasons. So we're looking at other ways to engage, you know, students, you know, community members to get feedback as well during the process.
Okay. And I also just wanted to share with board members, and if it doesn't happen, you can let me know at the November meeting. But we discussed this and Chris has sent it out to all building admin. But all board members should be receiving newsletters from each building. So some are weekly, some are bi-weekly, but by the time we meet next month in November, you should have received from each school. And I think Jay sent his today. So I just think it's important when we're talking about the strategic plan and we're talking about Corey Valley as a whole, that as a board member, you have some insight about what's happening in other buildings. Not that you're, not in, not in a micromanagement kind of term, I don't want anyone to think that, just more as informational so that when you come to this meeting, it's not just the principal's report you're seeing, but you've had some kind of breadth of, you know, information that's happened over time before this meeting to kind of know what's happening. All right? Okay, moving on to finance. Lewis.
All right, so one of the first items I have is a credit card limit increase. So currently, we have credit cards through People's Bank, which is now M and T Bank. Each administrator has a credit card and then I have a Corey Valley credit card, which I can save as sort of a backup. The credit limit for each administrator is $1,500. We're looking to increase the limit for the district as a whole. I'm recommending a limit of $30,000. And the reason for this is that we've come, we've come to certain parts of the year where there's a high demand for the credit cards, whether it be the end of the year with class trips and the administrators going and using their card or at the beginning of the school year where they're, they're doing purchasing that doesn't take POs. And there's been times where we've really been strapped for credit and we could have used an increase. And just due to the timing of when our payments go to the credit card, I mean, we try to process them as quickly as possible. But with us processing AP every two weeks, we could have a number of charges outstanding for our five schools. So I'm looking to, I'm recommending that we increase the credit limit for Corey Valley to $30,000.
So just a clarifying question. You said each card now is 1,500 and you want to increase each card to 30,000?
No, 30,000 is, would be the district's credit limit as a whole. I would increase each administrator's limit to probably about $2,500. And then the rest of the limit, we would just keep as a reserve. And then I have the ability to increase, temporarily increase administrators' limits up and down throughout the year. So if, if we have an administrator who's going out of town with a class trip and they need their limit increased to say 5,000, I could do that credit limit for a two-week period and then once they're back, I can lower it back down. So I manage it on a daily basis based on the needs of each school.
Okay. So the motion would be to increase the Corey Valley District credit card limit to $30,000?
Yes.
Would someone like to make that motion?
What's that? Right now, again, Lewis?
So each, there is, let's see, there's, each principal has a $1,500 limit and then my card has a $3,000 limit. So there's six administrators, so $12,000.
So it's a $12,000, you want to go to 30,000?
Yep.
But each building administrator would just have access to the limit that Lewis allows him limit to. So maybe I would have 500 and you would have 1,400. It doesn't mean that they have access to the full 30, right?
Correct. No one ever has access to the full 30.
And this is budgeted money, so it's not additional money on top of the budget, so.
Right.
And we still have to put in POs before we can even access that credit card. So it's not like I could, you know, go on a crazy shopping spree and Lewis would have no idea.
Great, that's what we want to, we want to hear. There's something in check for her, Lewis.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Better safe than sorry. Sounds like a good idea.
All right, so Nate makes the motion to increase the Corey Valley credit card limit to 30,000. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oh. Motion passes by majority. Okay, Lewis?
Monthly financials were in the packet. If there's no, if there's any questions on those, I will take that.
I don't see any.
Okay, so for budget, I mean, I don't have anything specifically prepared for tonight. We're, I'm working behind the scenes, putting together the first draft. I've been working with Chris on, on some of the many things that we talked about at that first meeting with getting staffing numbers together, pulling together all background information to have ready for you at the next meeting when we present the first draft. I'll be scheduling meetings with each of the administrators over the next couple of weeks. So I'll meet with them, hear what their needs are. Chris, Chris and I do that together. We hear what each principal's needs are, which should be pretty similar to what we went over a couple of months ago at that first meeting. I'll, I'll take into account any of the stuff that we go over and put that into the first draft. And usually what I do is I'll put together a preliminary first draft and then we'll get all of the administrators together to review that one last time to see where we are versus where we, where we think we need it to be based on the board feedback and then make any necessary changes, presentation type stuff, and finalize that for the board for the next board meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Lewis about budget for next month? All right, thank you, Lewis.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to personnel. In your pocket, you have a list of contract recommendations. Under professional staff, we have Joshua Bunker, Proctor Elementary Teacher, horizontal move. Michaela Taylor, West Rutland Teacher, horizontal move. Brenda Fort, West Rutland Teacher, horizontal move. And Gannon McKeeran, long-term sub at Proctor Elementary. Any questions? Extracurricular, Abigail Pharo, West Rutland 7-8 Girls Soccer. Matthew Parker, Proctor High Varsity Boys Basketball. Bridget Shatra, Polley Elementary After School Program Assistant. Kimberly Metcalf, Corey Valley Sport Transportation Staff. Jeannie Windgate, Corey Valley Sport Transportation Staff Substitute. Tabitha Perry, West Rutland 4-6 Soccer Coach. Questions?
No, I'm sorry.
What?
No, I'm sorry. I just have a question about the transportation staff. What does that, what's that job do?
Jay, you want, I mean, I do believe this is transporting individuals from West Rutland to Polley for football and things along those lines. Jay, is there anything else in there?
Yeah, it is actually just for the fall for football and, and then that's it.
So they pay per hour that they're out there doing that? Is that the way it works or is it just, that's, how does that work?
Yes, they get their regular hourly rate.
That's why you see discrepancy between the two.
So they drive there, wait for practice to be over, and drive them back?
Actually, they just drive there and back. They're there less than probably, the students are responsible to get their own rides home.
Okay.
So it is less than an hour that it takes to do a round trip to Polley or about an hour round trip to Polley and back. They, they do not wait for practice.
Okay. Any other questions? A motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations as read.
Make that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We also have resignation and retirement. You have two though, right? But there's only one. Oh, the other one is a leave?
It's a leave, yes.
Okay. So retirements, Elizabeth LeBron, Polley High School Teacher, effective the end of this school year. A motion would be in order to accept the retirement?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We also have a leave request in the packet. Do you want to address that, Chris?
Yeah, so this is just someone who is, as you know, we've had difficulties in staffing in certain areas within our SU. And so this individual has agreed to take on the role of special educator, work on a provisional license, work towards that, but is requesting a one-year leave. So if, at the end of this, if this individual elected to return to their position that they would, yeah, so. I would, I would support this.
And what's the exact date that the leave begins? Are they currently in this position?
Yes.
So was it the beginning of the year?
Yes.
Okay. So it's August of this year that the leave actually would be beginning?
Right.
Okay.
And being able to come back to the position doesn't mean that that position can't be temporarily filled while she's on leave, is that?
So the position can be filled, yes. And so the way that the, the leave works in our collective bargaining agreement, our master agreement, is that the individual can return back to positions similar to that. So if this position's filled, they, they're not necessarily go right back to that same position, but would be a similar position.
Okay.
Okay. So a motion would be in order to allow Ashley Siemens a one-year leave from August 31st, 2022 to August 31st, 20?
July 1st.
Oh, July 1st, 2022 to July 1st, 2023, or June 30?
June 30, yeah.
2023, okay. So from July 1st, 22, to June 30, 23. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority. All right, Communication Committee. Kristen?
So there's a couple of things sent out. The thing I'd like to draw your attention to is the very draft of the communication plan that says with notes. So the, the committee have been working for nine-ish months to work on this draft plan. We had some model plans that we were using to look at, to put this together. We don't obviously have a communications office at the SU level. So we have sort of collaborated with, obviously with IT folks to help get their websites up and things like that. So the idea was to put together a more comprehensive plan that, the goals there, you can see in the plan, that will create some expectations around what kinds of communication come from Corey Valley and, you know, what are our modes of communication, sort of, you know, what social media sites do we use? Where do we post things? If you're looking, if you get emergency communications, where those might come from, et cetera. So it kind of outlines the forms of communication and talks a little bit about sort of, not So it kind of outlines the forms of communication and talks a little bit about, sort of, not too much into content or frequency, but a little bit of that. So there, we had earlier, in earlier drafts, identified sort of three levels of communication. One, from the district, but we don't have our own separate district website, right? We just have the GRCSU website, and then we have, and then we have separate school-based websites. So we don't have a lot of particularly district-only communication. A lot of it comes either from SU or from your school-based staff, right? But we were thinking that there was sort of district-wide communication, and then school-based communication, and then classroom-based communication. So sort of three levels. So the plan started broken down that way, but there was kind of a lot of overlap. So some of the edits you'll see there in the one, in the version that says with notes have my questions, and I think some other folks still have some, like Sarah made some comments and questions in there, and Shannon Moriarty. So there's some notes there that I'm hoping people can sort of look at, you know, among other things. Those are the areas that I am hoping to get answers to questions as we formalize this plan. You know, I deleted a whole section in the end that was kind of repetitive and kind of got too far in the weeds in terms of frequency, of how often it's reasonable to post a Facebook message, for example. So I took out that last section there, but it could be put back in if folks think we need to have sort of these three levels or three scales of communication. But right now, I sort of have the bigger picture and then the sort of, you know, school-based focus. So if folks can look at that and provide comment on it, that would be great. I can send, you can send, sorry, your comments either to me or to Sarah, who's on the committee as well. And we can put all those comments and questions together, and we can come back at either, maybe not October, if there's not time in the agenda, but maybe in November. So just, we'd like to finalize this draft and have it, you know, usable for, hopefully by the end of this calendar year. So, and I can, you know, take any questions later, or we can talk about it now if people had a chance to look through it already, so.
Questions, comments, board, admin?
I have a question. I have a question on page three. In, under comment six, Shannon's title. I'm not sure what that means.
So in this plan, again, we had used a model plan where they have, you know, where it was referring to a communications person or staff member. And so Shannon was originally hired to look at just doing the websites, right? But her role as, you know, it's always more complicated than just, you know, posting something on a website. Should, you know, the question there was, should her, should we look at what that position could be doing if, as we expand out, if we expand out, looking at communication, to maintain our communications? Some schools have front office staff who can take on a lot more of the communication things, and some schools don't have front office staff who can take that on in terms of their daily or weekly or monthly duties. And so Shannon has been supporting them, at least that's my understanding, has been helping to support front office staff either in training or, you know, harvesting of photos or stories or events or things like that. So it's related to what she was doing in terms of getting websites up and running, but the maintenance of them, keeping them updated, making them consistent across, should we look at, you know, how that fits into what she is currently willing, able, or supposed to be doing in terms of her job description? So that comment was sort of getting at that question.
So I guess a follow-up on that is who decides whether a school staff member does it or doesn't do it?
Well, that's a good question. That's, that's in the nitty-gritty of, you know, we, I, this plan isn't meant to go down the procedural road. That's up to sort of building admin and the IT office to work out. At least at this point, that's how we're doing it. I'm not saying that that's the best way, but that's kind of how it's, it's been done. So we started down the road of adding some procedural aspects into this plan, and we sort of retreated away from that because it's not really our, it wasn't really the original goal of putting this plan together. And what fits for one school doesn't always fit for another school in terms of how things get updated because of the staffing, different staffing needs. But that is a good question.
Kristen, you mentioned that you've x-ed a lot of things on the bottom on page five, where it talks about the social media. It does still give a little bit of a three times or two times or, and I, as the person that does all this for my building, I just, there are weeks when I have lots to post, and there's weeks when I really have nothing, and I put out a newsletter, so that's my post, and has a lot of information. So I just want to make sure that we are keeping like the admin in mind of if there's numbers of times that we're supposed to be doing something, like if it's the newsletter that you really want us to focus on and that to be like a really impactful thing, maybe that's where we give the time, and less, and social media is like less time-bound on how many to post.
Okay. Kristen, that's why I really want admins and/or other staff, you know, to share this with folks that are actually the ones doing it. If that's not reasonable, then I don't want to, you know, the goal is not to make more work with this plan. It's more to just let folks know, you know, let our community know, these are the ways that we plan on communicating with you, you know, in certain, you know, if we have emergencies, if we have, if you're looking for classroom-based information, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, if, if those Facebook updates are, you know, we can change the language there that can be as needed, or, you know, once a week or something like that, those are, that's the kind of information I kind of didn't have putting this together. So those were our sort of suggestions, reasonable thoughts. But again, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, or somebody's not using Facebook at all, you don't have to be using Facebook, or you don't have to be using Twitter or Instagram. Some, some places do and some don't.
So do all buildings have access to their pages to make updates? Or are buildings relying on Shannon to make updates?
West Rutland is the only building that currently has staff who's familiar with WordPress, which is what the websites use. So in order for that to happen, we'd have to identify individual in all other buildings, train them on WordPress. But as Jen said, for, the concern is, do they have the staffing for that? And I know that West Rutland has a nice system down, you know, in terms of how they, and Jay could talk a little bit more about that than I can, but I think that's, has always been the concern, is even if we were able to train, do, you know, do some of our other buildings with the limited front office staff have the people to do that? And so, so right now, currently Shannon does all the, like Jen, or Kristen, or Liz, or Joe would just send something to Shannon, and then she would post it, put it on the website. That's her current...
Because I thought the goal was that she was going to build the website, and then we were going to transfer ownership to buildings? Because that seems a little duplicit to me. Like, if it's in my building, but I have to send it to you to send it back to me.
So, yeah, I, go ahead, Kristen.
So, in Poltoni, what we're trying to do right now is we use our librarian, and she's the one who has access and can post and change the website. Sometimes Shannon is used or needed for specific things just because of the limited access that Johanna might have. And we also have created a shared folder, a shared drive, so that anytime there's anything updated, photos, whatever, Shannon can just go in and grab them and post them to the GRCSU website as well.
So the other thing that Shannon had mentioned that some other schools do is have sort of a little form that folks could fill out. She could create a form to fill out where you could do a little blurb, you know, a some news event or something that you want to share with the community. And she could then, if needed, she could then, you know, take that little blurb and put it up. So it would be not just on a school website, but it also gets on the GRCSU website because the, you know, front office staff aren't doing the GRCSU website updates. So that was just a question she had. It's not something that has to happen, but it was just another idea of how we can start sharing stories of fun things that students are up to, or if, you know, the fourth grade or fifth grade has a newsletter that they want to put out that's just, you know, normally printed off and sent home for parents rather than put online or in a virtual way, that that could be something, there could be a little form for staff to fill out that could, you know, make that happen.
Jen?
Well, I was just going to say she has access to all of our calendars, which are on our websites and our newsletters. It feels like she could very easily just show up at all these events if the goal is curating things for our websites. We all put those things out there. To me, it feels like then I have to fill out a form to request her there for information that's already available for her to just come to the buildings and take the pictures and do a story on. So I would think that just by reading our newsletter, she could get a lot of the information about what's going on in our buildings.
So I just wanted, as opposed to talking about specific employees, maybe we could just stick to just, you know, expectations, and what our expectation would be, and then we could work procedurally, how to meet those expectations. I think that might be the best way to go through, so...
So my expectation was that websites were going to be created, and buildings were then going to have access to them, to curate them. And I guess if, what I'm hearing is that one person is curating all of them with the exception of one webs, one building, I'm perplexed why they look a little different. Because I would think, for example, if I had a picture of the principal, then under each principal's photograph would be that individual's name. And I know that when we started school, that that, that there were some differences. So I find that peculiar, that one person is curating, but they all look different. I also, my expectation also was that in moving away and giving buildings access to their websites after they were built, that would allow, that we wouldn't have a primary employee just kind of overseeing websites. And I also thought that we had discussed here before about photographs and things like that, that we did not have an expectation for an SU employee to be at events taking pictures, that we, if pictures needed to be submitted, they should be submitted in some capacity. I remember speaking about that pretty extensively, that we thought that was not good use of employee time. So those are, those were my expectations.
So I'll just clarify something, Jen, just because the form reference, it wasn't a form that one would fill out for someone to come and cover an event. It was a form that if you had a really cool fish reintroduction project going on, and you particularly wanted that out there, and on like the GRCSU website, which you probably aren't updating yourself, you're just doing your own, so that, then that would trigger something so that IT folks could make sure that that news also got on the GRCSU. It wouldn't, it wouldn't make it an extra, it is a little bit of an extra step, but it gets your news story out there to a broader audience. Do you know what I mean? So that, that was that, what that form was for. It was not to have someone come and cover your, your stuff that you're already doing. And yes, Lisa, you are right that we talked about a very limited scope for what the website developer would be doing. And so that's part of why, you know, this plan, again, we stayed away from procedural stuff about who's doing what in what building, for the most part, or at least didn't get in too far into the weeds, but I think it does bring up the discussion. If, if, you know, we don't have a communications staff person, we don't have a PR person, right? So if we want stuff updated on the GRCSU website as well, who does that part, right? So that's part of the discussion, I think. And then if we do, if we are going to put it all on either librarians or front office staff, or whoever's going to do it in the building, that will, I don't think that they all have full-on access to WordPress. And I, you know, if Greg was here, he could tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe Chris knows, but I think the access is limited in terms of what you can do to edit your website. I could be wrong about that, but...
That's correct. There are varying levels of access that you can grant to someone.
So I think maybe a good next step would be if, maybe at the November meeting, if building admin would come back and share with us how their website's being updated, who's doing it in their building, what the access is that they have, and what they see as a concern or an issue with sharing information out to their community? And how they currently share information with Shannon if you wanted something on the SU website, or if you don't do that. So then we would have a better understanding what's happening in each building to kind of move the conversation along for expectations. So does that seem reasonable to, just, I mean, it's just bullet points, not, it doesn't have to be extensive, you know? Does that seem like a reasonable expectation? And then we can have an idea of what we need, what we don't need, and what works for us to move things forward. And maybe also if building admin could share how you share information, if you're on Twitter, if you're, you know, Facebook. And I know that's sometimes just very specific to communities. Some communities communicate in a, on one particular social platform, so. Is that, good, that we could do that for November? All right.
Yeah. Yeah. In addition to any other questions or edits you have about the plan in general, apart from anyone's specific position or role.
Right. And I, there's a lot on here to process, and I think it would be good if building admin and board members take it, highlight, make questions, comments, and come back prepared to discuss at the November meeting, and we'll discuss it there. Okay?
Sounds good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on, we have a slew of policies to read out loud. These are second read policies. F-17, pupil privacy rights. F-19, student distribution of non-school-sponsored literature. F-20, standard entry age kindergarten admission. F-25, Section 504 and ADA grievance protocols for students and staff. G-6, complaints about instructional material. H-3, advertising in schools, public solicitation, student fundraising. H-4, visits by parents, community members, or media interviewing, filming, videotaping, or recording. So those are all second reads. Questions about second reads? Second reads will be going on to the SU then for approval. H-3, I think I had a question about H-3. If I can find it.
I have a question on one of them.
Okay, go ahead.
It's on F-20, which is the birthday thing. F-20, right?
Oh, kindergarten, yeah.
Kindergarten, yeah.
Mm-hmm. What's the question?
It's, you know, my birthday's the second. I mean, you know, it's such a.
We've had this discussion in all of our boards. I think it's, no matter where you move that date, you're always going to have an issue if someone's just missing it by a day or by a week. But I think it's one where we have to have a clear cutoff. And I think that was part of the discussion, and also was around the appeal because we put that, you can't appeal this. That basically it's just cut and dry, boards would agree to that. Because if, the minute we open up for one, then we don't have a policy in particular case. So, and we understand that, look at developmentally, that there are some students who, you know, are a day away or a week away or just missed the cutoff, that might be developmentally ready to go. But it just, it's, we have to have that date, so, yeah.
No way to change that to September 30th?
Then we have somebody who, October 1st. Like I said, no matter where you go.
It's always going to be somebody.
Right, and so.
That's why it used to be, you didn't even go to kindergarten, you just started school at first grade. Okay. Any other questions on policies? Mine is on H-3, the advertising. It really only seems to deal with fundraising, I think. I mean, that's the only phrase that's used, is fundraising activities. It doesn't, to me, public solicitation is different than fundraising.
My experience in the past is you'll get somebody who will, you know, you're sort of advertising that you're selling candy for a certain company for a fundraiser.
Okay, the other question where it says, shall be coordinated by the principal or approved by the school board. Coordinated and approved mean very different things to me, so.
What about things like Justin's, too? Like they come in and they're selling stuff. So that, you know, they post a little thing that says, Justin's will be here today, or whatever, too.
Do we use them for yearbooks?
Yeah.
So in my opinion, if we're using them for yearbooks, then sort of we've granted them permission for whatever else they may be doing within reason.
But I think it should say that when it says advertising in school, that it should somehow address what it means for advertising in school. I mean, like if I, if I'm doing oil changes for $12.95 next month, can I come put up a sign on the bulletin board?
Well, I, I'll just say they're varying levels. And I think that's maybe something for the committee to consider. But you walk into some of our gyms and you'll see, you know, Al's Body Shop. You know, I mean, so it'll be a local person who's donated for a sign.
Sponsorship, though.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
Right, but that's, that's still advertising, so, you know.
Yeah, but they've paid for that, so that's.
But if Pepsi comes in and pays for us, you know, and then we just have Pepsi all over the school, I mean, I don't know where, like I said, there's a lot of gray areas.
When you look at like sponsorship versus advertising, I mean, so, I don't know. Well, I don't know, but the, that sentence where it says coordinated by principals or approved by school board, that, that's an awkward sentence, I think. Because what does it mean, coordinated? I mean, I could see fundraising activities shall be approved and/or by, or by the principal and/or the school board. But I'm not, I don't know, I just, I, I find that policy just strange.
We'll kick it back to the committee for.
I mean, maybe no one else, maybe everyone else. It lists a lot of things in the top, and the only word that it lists down in the body is fundraising. And I'm fine if you want to say that, you know, advertising is hanging banners or whatever.
I'm just saying there's a lot of gray area, there's a lot of subjectivity to this in terms of what someone interprets as an advertisement as opposed to solicitation. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with those signs up. I think that's great.
But if, but if it doesn't, but if it just has it in the title and it doesn't say what it is in the body, then there's no gray area because nothing's defined.
I mean, my other concern was in, not to blame any or push finger to anybody, but you know, the principal's brother-in-law is now doing this. And, you know, is that likely to get approved by that principal in one school? Where absolutely, probably not get applied anyplace else, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to, like, I think our building admin have a clear role about conflict of interest, but I don't know. I just think that it should say something or it should just.
So it says one set of things is discouraged and the other set of things needs approval. So part of the, what I'm hearing is maybe, maybe everything needs, do you know what I mean? Like, like why doesn't, are you asking why doesn't? So the first paragraph says advertising in schools, a solicitation of staff for commercial or political purposes will be discouraged. Why doesn't that say will be approved or coordinated?
Well, and because it says for commercial or political purposes will be discouraged. Well, commercial would be the banners, in my opinion.
Right.
Right? So that was, yeah, so that was, it just, it seems contrary to what we're doing, I guess is the biggest problem, so.
So is it that like commercial maybe needs to be, if we're going to discourage it, we need to define more what commercial means here? Or, because like every time somebody puts a YouTube video up in their classroom, you're going to get a commercial that your kids are going to see in the classroom. So we're also allowing that to happen, too, so.
Right.
I think the difference in that one, just my opinion, is that it's part of the process of YouTube. That's how they raise their money. So you kind of, kind of live with that. This one here is more somebody's knocking on your door, and you have an opportunity to either accept it or reject it, or encourage it or discourage it.
I don't know. I just think, I would vote no.
Yeah, and I would say if somebody can come up with a wording solution that would help the policy committee know kind of where to go to, like, so maybe not right at this second, but if we had some, somebody who could think of a good wordsmithing way that would satisfy that, that would be super helpful.
Sure. And I guess I'll go back, and maybe this is pretty much the original policy. I don't know, because it's hard to tell what has and hasn't been changed. But I can go back and look at the original. But, I mean, either, I just think if we're not going to address it, then the title should just be taken out of the.
Yeah, I think the title's alluded to, like Sarah said, some of these things are discouraged, but it sounds like that we're not always discouraging the commercial stuff. Because like Chris said, there's some gray area there, so. Yeah, I, I could go and look in our folder and see. I don't recall off the top of my head if we specifically changed anything on this one, but I could go back and look.
Okay, so, well, since they are second reads, we need to have a motion, right, to move?
Correct. Either move it back to committee or to approve.
Okay. So the motion to?
Send it back to policy committee for revision.
Send H-3 back to policy and for revisions. Any discussion?
Can I just ask a question regarding that motion, then?
Yeah.
Would you prefer that we change the title, then, to make it more specific to what is being allowed? Or would you prefer that we really define what commercial means?
Um, or both, yeah. And I will think about it, and I will send something to you. I don't, I'm not suggesting something without sending a thought for you.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Kristen, I just sent you a policy from another district around this that you can bring to the committee if you want, around wording.
Okay.
I was going to say, I didn't see, I didn't see a model policy from VSB, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So the other second re, a motion will be in order to approve the other second read policies with the exception of H-3.
I make that motion?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. First read policies. H-4, oh no, that was a second read, sorry. B-2, goal set, board goal setting and evaluation. D-1, personal recruitment, selection, appointment, and criminal record checks. F, excuse me, F-2, search, seizure, and interrogation of students by school personnel. F-10, 18-year-old students. G-1, curriculum development and coordination. G-3, student trips. G-4, selection of library materials. G-5, selection of instructional materials. G-11, animal dissection. G-13, Title I comparability. H-2, community use of school facilities. But those are all first reads, if people want to go through and read those and make any suggestions.
Remind, can you remind, it's Eric, the email for suggestions, Eric?
You can send to Eric or Kristen, she's on also.
Yes, okay, all right.
And I'll forward them to him because he really tries to keep track of those as best as he can, getting them from all the different boards. And I think Chris also tries to keep track, too.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I really prefer it just goes to Eric or committee members. I think just one last point, if, yeah, so. So just send it to Kristen or Eric would be great.
Yes, okay, yes, great, okay.
All right, any other business to come before the board? The next meeting is October 17th, and I think we should really try to focus just on the first draft of budgets for that so we can have thoughtful conversation about the budget.
It's in-person, correct?
In-person, yeah. It would be great if we could be in-person for budget discussion. Otherwise, if we go into executive session, we're going to have to start tossing out. Yeah, so is it possible people could be here for October 17th for the budget in-person?
Yeah, I will schedule my class, so they will be done earlier. Otherwise, I can't get there right when you guys start or get home right when we start, so.
Let them out for good behavior.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be happy.
Okay, so that'd be great if we could do in-person. If you're SU representative, the meeting this month is in-person only. There is no virtual option. Future agenda items should be sent to Chris or Christine by October 10th. But like I said, if we could really just try to focus on the budget, I think we have a lot of new members, and the first draft of the budget's just a lot, I think. So Louis likes to make it painful, so. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the board, a motion to adjourn would be in order at 7:43.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. All those in favor? All right, thank you all very much. Have a lovely evening. Good night.